We start with the substantive discussions if we could, if the attendants from the boroughs could introduce themselves, please.
Good morning, sir. I'm Dean James, Planning Policy Manager at the London Borough of Sutton. Of this waste plan, Sutton has been the lead authority, although obviously all the partners are equal. Thank you, sir.
And my name is Patrick Witter from Sutton Council and I prepared the sustainability appraisal on the plan.
Good morning, sir. Julia Doh, London Borough of Croydon. I'm the Planning Policy Manager.
Tara Butler, London Borough of Merton.
Even for the best days, a planning officer, London Borough of Merton.
I'm Brian, Principal Planning Policy Officer at the Royal Borough of Kingston and Pym.
Are any of your colleagues joining us on Zoom this morning?
No, not what we're aware of. So we should all be here participating this morning.
Thank you. Mr. Van der West, who's in there, did you have some housekeeping matters for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Inspector. So I've just got a few points on with regards to mobile phones. You can remind everybody to please turn them off now or to put them onto a silent mode. With toilets are at ground level at the main entrance of the civic centre, just to the left of the stairs that you use to get up to the council chamber. With water, there's a drinking water dispenser near the entrance to the toilets. Sanitizing, please use the alcohol wipes and the hand gel that is available at the table at the entrance to the chamber. Fire alarms, there are no fire drills scheduled during the hearing hours today. If the fire alarm sounds either intermittently or continuously, please leave the building immediately by the nearest available fire exit without stopping to collect belongings. Staff will direct you to the exits and fire assembly points. If you're unable to use the stairs, a member of staff will assist you. The hearing will reconvene if it's safe to do so, otherwise it will stand adjourned. Attendance sheet, please ensure that you've signed the attendance sheet on the table at the entrance to the chamber. Filming, please note that the meeting is being filmed for publication on the council's YouTube channel. Therefore, if you're participating in this meeting, you're consenting to be recorded and to the use of these recordings for broadcasting. The microphones, when the speaker invites participants to speak, they need to press the little silver button with an icon of an head at the base of the microphone in front of them. A red light will shine on the microphone, indicating that the microphone is on and the camera will focus on the speaker. When the participant has finished speaking, they must press the same button again to switch the microphone off, which will switch the red light off and the camera's focus will draw back. Induction loop, there is an induction loop for people within the chamber for people with hearing difficulties. Thank you, Inspector.
Thank you. I'd also like to introduce Carmel Edwards, who's here as Program Officer. And she's responsible for organising hearing sessions and publication of related material and should be your first point of contact for any assistance required. Outside of the hearing sessions, Inspector Normington and myself will only communicate with the boroughs and other parties via Miss Edwards. So the plan under examination is the Regulation 19 version of September 2020. Prior to submission, Regulation 19 consultation took place. Inspector Normington and I have those representations and will take them into account. We've produced a guidance note for the examination and also identified matters, issues and related questions. And these were published on the examination website and paper copies can be made available if anyone needs them. We have received hearing statements from the boroughs and from others as listed and included on the webpage. The boroughs have also published schedules of proposed changes to the plan and these will be considered alongside the submitted plan. A timetable setting out the matters to be discussed today has been issued. And we will do our best to follow this. Inspector Normington and I are tasked with considering the soundness of the plan in accordance with the criteria of the National Planning Policy Framework and also whether it is legally compliant. The hearings are intended to assist us in that regard. In submitting the plan, the boroughs consider that it is sound and this is a starting point for our examination. So if you are challenging the soundness of the plan, then you have to explain why and what changes will make it sound. So we are proceeding on the basis that while there may be disagreements relating to the plan's soundness, but the majority of people who have made representations want to see the adoption of a sound plan to ensure that appropriate waste management arrangements are in place, which take into account the area's character, environment and heritage assets. Consequently, Inspector Normington and I will be conducting the examination in a proactive and solution orientated manner and will welcome your assistance with this task. We have read and will take into account the hearing statements that have been prepared and also the original representations that were made. So there is no need for these to be substantially repeated. Instead, our aim is that the discussion moves on from those documents and deals with specific questions that we have or areas where further clarification or explanation are required. At times, we may ask for a more general contribution or a summary of your position. It is also helpful to stick to the matter in hand and to refrain from commenting on unrelated matters. As two days are allocated for the hearings and some additional contingency sessions have been programmed, it may be that some matters will be best deferred to subsequent days in order that we keep on track. Also, matters covered and things said on one day form part of the examination and do not need to be repeated subsequently. So in order to test the plan for soundness, we will be asking questions and you will have seen that we've already been doing this via the published MIQ document. And both the boroughs and other participants have responded to these. So this will continue today. However, anything that is asked should not be taken as demonstrating a particular predisposition. And we will normally start a particular topic by asking the boroughs for responses to questions that we have before indicating that we wish others to comment. If you wish to comment, then please indicate this by turning your nameplate on its side. We may also invite contributions from you on specific points where we think this may assist the examination. In speaking during the hearing, we would request you are concise and specific. In particular, if you wish to highlight certain parts of your statement or other documents that form part of the examination, then it will be helpful if you can provide the reference. It is open to the boroughs to propose further changes to the plan. And we would ask that they keep a record of possible changes that arise during the discussions. Any main modifications will be subject to further consultation. And we've programmed a short session at the end of each sitting day to ensure that any modifications that have been discussed or additional items suggested during the course of the sessions have been adequately recorded. The examination remains open until our report is submitted to the council. However, no further representations or evidence will be accepted after the hearing sessions are finished unless we specifically request otherwise. Moreover, we are not expecting any further written submissions during the course of the hearing sessions, but we may request further material should discussions indicate that that might be useful. At the end of the hearing sessions, we will indicate the likely timescales for the next phases of the examination. So before we move on to the discussion of matter one, are there any questions at this stage about the procedural aspects of the hearings? Okay, thank you. So in that case, if we can move on to our discussion of matter one. Oh, sorry. Do the boroughs want to make a general opening statement before we move on to the matter one discussion?
Thank you, sir. Yes, I've just prepared a brief statement. It'll only take a minute or two just to kick things off. So firstly, just on behalf of the South London Waste Plan Boroughs, we'd like to welcome you both here today as well as the participants, anyone that's listening online as well. And also just like to upfront, thank Carmel Edwards as well, the Program Officer, for all the work she's done so far on this examination. We're very grateful to have her. So the South London Waste Plan Boroughs of Croydon, Kingston, Merton, Sutton have been jointly working on waste planning matters since 2008, when it was first agreed that we would prepare a joint South London Waste Plan together. That successful joint partnership working resulted in the adoption of the first South London Waste Plan early 2012 with a plan period of 2011 to 2021. As such, that plan expires this year, so it's been necessary to prepare a new replacement plan. So we have up to date policies in place to effectively consider waste planning matters for the next 15 years up to 2036. Now, given this successful joint working that we've undertaken in the past, it was agreed that we would all work together again to prepare a new plan, which we've been doing since 2018 in consultation with our stakeholders and local communities. There have been a number of key issues and challenges for us to consider during the preparation of this draft plan. And we do consider that we've addressed those in the plan that we've put before this examination. Some of these key issues include how much waste should we be planning for, what facilities do we have, how much existing capacity there is, how much can we manage within our plan area? We've had to consider cross boundary issues to ensure that we can achieve net self sufficiency, managing as much waste as possible within the plan area whilst recognising that some cross boundary movements will need to continue to achieve net self sufficiency. We've had to consider the scarcity of land in London and balancing the need to meet our waste apportionments and targets against what we see as the competing need and high demand for other industrial and employment related uses, which often occupy the same types of land across our four boroughs. We've also had to take into account climate change, reducing reliance on landfill and also the circular economy, so developing a plan that supports waste developments, achieving zero carbon, supporting waste being managed to tie up the waste hierarchy as possible and supporting opportunities for the circular economy to expand. So as I say, we consider we've prepared a plan that positively responds to these challenges. We think we've identified sufficient facilities and land to meet our London Plan apportionment targets, which is already 13% higher than the waste that arises within our boroughs. We have sufficient capacity to exceed our construction and demolition risings. We've considered the needs for other waste streams and we consider that we can achieve net self sufficiency through the continued cross boundary movements of some waste, which will be monitored on an annual basis through the Waste AMR and our duty to cooperate obligations. This means we've achieved a balance between meeting waste needs whilst not over safeguarding land. This will put us in a good position to meet our identified needs, industrial and employment need in the future when we prepare our individual local plans. Whilst the plan has taken a slightly restrictive approach to new waste sites, through its support for compensatory provision, opportunities for intensification and support for co-location, it still offers opportunities and flexibility. Finally, sir, we've continued to work with the Mayor of London as well on identified issues. And we're now in a position where the mayor considers the waste plan to be in general conformity with the London Plan, as confirmed in his updated letter of conformity, which forms part of the examination library now. So in summary and to conclude, the boroughs consider that the waste plan provides a sound and positive strategy for achieving sustainable development and meeting the identified need for waste over the next 15 years. So we welcome this public examination and we look forward to discussing those identified matters over the coming days. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. James. So if we can now move on to matter one. So if I could have the borough's general response to the matter as the question's framed there, is the plan legally compliant? Have the relevant procedural requirements been met and has the duty to cooperate been discharged?
The borough's general position on this matter is that yes, the plan is legally compliant and we've met those procedural requirements. And we have discharged the duty to cooperate. Just on that last point, obviously, we consider that we've engaged constructively in a long time basis with those relevant organisations and strategic partners. We've continued that process throughout the summer. As you would have seen with the submissions we made alongside these statements, so there's been some additional statements of common ground with the central Berkshire authorities and with Mayor of London. And we can continue to pursue Slough Borough Council as well for a statement of common ground. We set out in our statement how we considered we'd met the requirements of our LDS and statements of common ground as well. So we think we've met those requirements from that perspective too. So our general position is we've met those obligations, sir.
Thank you, Mr. James. I want to pick up a few more points on the duty to cooperate shortly. But turning to the sustainability appraisal firstly. So we're going to go on to more detailed discussions on air quality issues in subsequent sessions. But in terms of the sustainability appraisal itself, would you be able to tell us whether it gives clear evidence to indicate why, having considered reasonable alternatives, the plan's strategy is an appropriate one? Is this one for you, Mr. Witter?
Thank you. That's quite a broad question. And I think firstly, I can just point to the fact that we followed all of the stages which are set out in the best available guidance on sustainability appraisal. So first and foremost, we haven't really left anything unsaid in terms of all of the key stages. And actually, as you will see see from Table three of our matter statement, that sets out quite an exhaustive checklist of all of the things set out either in the SCA legislation, the 2004 Act and also best practice guidance on sustainability appraisal. Although that in itself doesn't show that we've compared all of the available strategies, at least we have completed each of the fundamental tasks that it must contain. I think to get into the kind of number of the question, whether we've considered all of the available alternative strategies for managing South London's waste risings up to 2036. I think the answer there is really in the appraisal matrix, which is set out in sorry, section. I'm sorry. Section 12 of the Sustainability Appraisal on the submission version for the Regulation 19 consultations, that clearly sets out the comparative likely impacts of each of the strategic alternatives which were considered. So basically, there were four options which the appraiser considered. Option one was the proposed plan. So basically, I'm actually not identifying any new sites combined with modified updated policies. Option two, what, sorry, just have to make sure I've got this correct. Yeah. Option two A is safeguarding existing sites and all industrial areas. Option two B was safeguarding existing sites and identify new sites. And option three was the do nothing scenario. So basically, just let the previous plan expire. And I think in some details, the appraisal matrix in section 12, it really does spell out the justification as to why we believe that option one is the best, is the most sustainable option.
You've seen that there've been some comments at Regulation 19 stage, particularly on how air quality effects were taken into account in the sustainability appraisal. Have you got any particular responses to those?
I think it would help me if the question could be more specific because there were many points raised in those representations. It is quite difficult to answer that question, to be honest, because it needs to be more specific.
Okay. What could you give us an overview of how air quality implications were taken into account in the sustainability appraisal?
I think we looked at air quality mapping carried out on behalf of Transport for London, which is basically a contour map looking at the whole of London or the whole of South London, which is included in the baseline section of the sustainability appraisal. We also set out as part of the environmental baseline, the Anode to particulates monitoring results for all of the stations within the four boroughs. And when considering the alternative strategies, basically, we I think we we were trying to compare the alternative strategies on the basis of what was a realistic option. So for example, we couldn't consider the option of closing down sites that already had planning permission and already had a waste licence from the Environment Agency. And I think the fundamental argument was that based on the best available evidence carried out by the consultants and also updated information, we knew that the existing sites had sufficient capacity exceeded the apportionment and also the forecast of risings for South London for the plan period. So basically, we were arguing that if we were to identify new sites under option two A that was considered or under option two B, if we were to sorry, I need some help here. If we simply carry forward the previous plan, I think it's a reasonable argument to say that each of those other options would lead to more traffic movements because what we have in our proposed plan is a balance between, well, we have self sufficiency, but we don't we don't want to so exceed the so hugely or risings for C and D waste that would actually lead to more transport movements coming into the boroughs. So we feel we have the right balance in exceeding the apportionment quite comfortably, which is backed up by the updated evidence set out in the annual monitoring report, which updates the evidence base up to 2019. And I think the issue with the representations which came forward at the Regulation 19 stage was that the argument was that we should have quoted every single diffusion tube for local air quality monitoring station throughout the four boroughs. And I think from a practical point of view, it would have been very difficult to accommodate all that data in one report. And secondly, it would have been very hard to separate out actually what was due to the existence of waste sites that already had planning permission and also what was due to other general traffic movements. In fact, many of those movements would be going to and from industrial locations in South London. Yeah, so I think for now, that's all to say.
Can I just ask a supplementary question on that? And it's in two parts. The first part, and it's probably the reference to those representations, is the linkage between the plan and other environmental controls that manage air quality. And then the second part of the question is perhaps how does a plan therefore consider air quality in thinking about future intensification, co-location? So it's kind of two parts. There's existing sites that perhaps the plan can't influence that much unless something changes, but nonetheless are other regulatory regimes in place that looks at air quality matters. So that question is how far does a plan go in terms of perhaps alerting us to those other regulatory regimes? And secondly, recognising that air quality is a baseline issue, is a future issue. How far does a plan go in terms of recognising that as an issue to be addressed in consideration of intensification or co-location?
I think on the first issue, in fact, something I should have said in my previous answer is that when you are appraising a plan, especially if you're appraising a policy, like a development management policy, you can't really appraise it on the basis that, well, it's never enforced properly anyway. You actually have to judge the policies as they are written. You're assessing a plan, not what some people might argue that in the past, perhaps insufficient planning obligations have been set to ensure that the air quality policy requirements are complied with. And that is a valid issue and it's certainly never been completely perfect in the past. But I think in terms of the sustainability appraisal process and actually looking at the development management policy, that that's how we approach appraising the policy. And I think on the second question, if I've got it right, I think actually we have a much greater emphasis in our proposed plan on plan monitoring. So I think going forward, we would, as set out in our amended monitoring framework, we would pay much more attention to making sure that we don't only monitor waste related developments, where sites are lost, where sites are gained, but actually as enforcement of conditions. to making sure that we don't only monitor waste related developments, where sites are lost, where where sites are gained, but actually as enforcement of conditions and actually whether we are indeed implementing policy WP five, which I think is the main one to do with amenity and and air quality and transport movements. But fundamentally, on the question of whether it was possible for the baseline, well, to well, the sustainability appraisal to anticipate future air quality emissions from future permissions which haven't been submitted yet. There could be future planning applications for the intensification of sites or even for a compensatory site. And it's it's not, it really isn't possible for sustainability appraisal to anticipate the details of a particular planning application. And fundamentally, it was looking at the the strategic approaches to managing South London's waste. And and a very strong argument was that the options simply were not open to start closing sites which already have planning permission. So of all of the options under consideration, I think there's a compelling argument to say that actually that would lead to fewer traffic movements and less air quality problems than all of the other options that were realistic and also capable of meeting the apportionment, exceeding the apportionment and also waste arises for other waste waste streams.
Just a final point and then we'll move on. I think obviously we'll discuss this a little bit more detail tomorrow and Inspector Ford will obviously concentrate on this with some of those comments in some more detail. I think the point I was just trying to make there is that it's kind of a general overview is is the plan sufficiently robust to deal with future issues of air quality in either intensification, co-location or compensatory capacity? And that's the policy that you referred to. And the second point, which will probably come more alert tomorrow, is that the the role of the plan in relation to sites have existing planning permission? And can the plan do anything about that, if at all? But nonetheless, are the regulatory regimes are looking at issues of air quality? Not only the council, but other regulatory regimes and the Environment Agency that also address these matters also. So notwithstanding the fact that it's already got planning permission, there's not a lot the plan can do. You are mindful of that through the monitoring regime, the Environment Agency also monitors it. There are other mechanisms in place through air quality monitoring that can deal with that. But nonetheless, the issue is, is the plan robusting going forward in terms of how it considers air quality and then monitors that effect? And I think that's that's probably something we'll we'll get back into a little bit more detail, probably giving you the answer there, to be honest. But that's that's the reason why I asked the question is how does a plan deal with what's said already? Can it? But nonetheless, it can be alert to the fact that you can't change what's already got planning permission. But nonetheless, going forward, there will be changes likely. How does a plan address those changes? And I think that's the policy that you're referring to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Witter. I've got no further questions on the sustainability appraisal at this stage. Thank you for that. So we can move on to the duty to cooperate. And if I could take you to the annex one of your hearing statement. So that updates that table takes us through the the issues cooperated on and and the bodies that have been cooperated with and so on. So I just had a few follow up questions on that. So firstly, there was some indication that there might have been some further work on this statement of common ground with Slough. Has that come to any fruition, Mr. James?
So we continue to pursue them after the submission for statements, but unfortunately, we are still in the same position that we've been since June last year in that we haven't had any response at all from them. I think we set out that email chain alongside the statement to show the communication that we had had with them in the past and we'd reached that point where they had agreed to sign that statement. They requested us send it back to them with our signature, which we did. But from that point onward, we just had radio silence. I think I flagged up in the statement, though, we know that those communications are getting through because we were getting automated responses. We knew the people were in post still. We were also including the, you know, generic planning policy contact details. And we were contacted to include them last week. But there still hasn't been a response. I don't know if that's been impacted by the severity of the financial position that Slough Borough Council are in at the moment, which we'd all have seen, issued a section one one four notice, but from the responses out, automated responses, it seems that people are still there and in post. It's just we're not not getting a response. I think I mean, it's a bit frustrating because the issues I think were resolved. The principal issue was around the Lakeside ERF facility, which is still going to be operational for the medium, short to medium term at least, probably longer. But in any event, that waste was due to be managed at the Beddington ERF facility now that that's up and running and operational anyway. So we didn't think there were really any outstanding issues other than their signature on this document, so.
Thank you for that. Now turning to the narrative on London Borough of Greenwich. So it says outstanding issues. The boroughs have not received a response from Bexley. Is that a typo or a Bexley in a are they in a sort of partnership agreement with Greenwich?
Yeah, I think I think you're probably correct, sir. I'm just trying to find the Greenwich entry to. Yes, that's that's correct. That is a typo.
Okay, in terms of NHS England, has there been any further update on their position?
Again, no. They've, as we as we set out, they flagged up a possible issue about clinical waste early on. But again, despite attempts to get more information on that, we haven't had any further correspondence from them as we outlined within the statements. I think it came up in matter three or four as well. So that that still reflects the current position of of the NHS.
Thank you for your responses on those further questions. Inspector Norwinton and I have no other questions on matter one. So we may adjourn until we reconvene for the discussion of matter two. So thank you for your contributions this morning.
Mr. Ford, at what time will we, can you confirm what time we'll resume just for the arrangements with Zoom and the YouTube feed?
Sorry, yes, I'll just find the timetable.
The timetable times eleven fifteen, I think, Inspector Ford.
Sorry, it's eleven fifteen.
Just for information, the arrangement is that we'll put up a slide effectively so that people will will know YouTube when to return to continue watching.